Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting at the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Today is Tuesday, December 9th, and we're happy you're joining here, joining us here this evening. We have a really special meeting with some important recognitions and some business of the town to conduct. So let's get started. I'll call this meeting to order. And we'll begin with an invocation by evangelist Wanda Lawrence of Jehovah Shama Ministries.
Yeah, one standing. What a blessing to be here. Certainly respect to Mayor, to all the Board of Aldermen. Let us pray. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we thank you that you have allowed us to come together again, God, for another meeting. And God, we pray, God, that you would bless, God, in the name of Jesus, the leaders, God, that they would hear you, God, that they would make the best decisions, God, for the town of Kernersville. We pray that you bless, oh God, all the leaders, God, in this town. Remember those, the young people that have been recognized on tonight. We thank you for them. And God, we thank you, God, that we ask that you be in the midst of this meeting, be in the midst of your people, be in the midst of the schools. For God, we need you so much. We need you now. And God, we trust you, God, because you are faithful to us. We give you praise. We give you glory. We give you honor, being everything that's done and said in this meeting tonight. God, we pray that you take over, God. Let your will be done, and we'll praise your name. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance by the United States of America, public, religious fans, one nation, undergone, indivisible, eternal, just as. Thank you. You may be seated. So it is a special night with a lot to celebrate. We have some fantastic athletes, probably some little brothers, little sisters, big brothers, big sisters, and family members in attendance, and people from your school who also are very proud of the achievement tonight. So we'll start with that. Helping me will be our town manager, Curtis Swisher. Many of you know him as coach, probably half the room, but he has been a coach for 23 years and was instrumental in the town of Kernersville developing the cross-country course there at Ivy Redmond Park, which most of you in the room know this, but it has been, for those who don't, it's been the site, the location of the state cross-country tournament now for many years. And it's a very popular and well-loved course in the state. So, Mr. Swisher?
Want to recognize who's here, as far as.
Yes, I think we have some of the staff and coaches and leaders of the schools. Dr. Jared Rashford, President of Bishop McGinnis. Claire Willis, Principal. And Jeff Stoller, Athletic Director, are you here? Very good. Mike Smith, who's a coach, but is Coach Web here also? We'd like to give you a round of applause, so. Thank you. And now, recognize some athletes.
All right, and those, most of you in the room obviously know you're here, you know. Bishop was the, one of the men's cross-country, the 2A champions, and in CLA was the men's cross-country 1A champion. So starting with Bishop, we'll just go in alphabetical order. We have Ethan Brewer. Cole Clothier. Adrian, and I'm not going to try his last name. I think it's Dan Akus, is that right? Caleb Eaton. And the next guy up, in addition to the school winning the 2A state title, the next guy was the individual winner overall for the 2A, Drew Pacholke. Josh Reich. And Alexander Torres.
We're very proud of your achievements. Let, just give them all a big round of applause. Would you like to shake everyone's hand? You can start with Sarah. Don't miss Chris. To President Rashford and Principal Willis and the coaching staff, we really appreciate your support and encouragement of these fine athletes. Thank you. All right, and from the North Carolina Leadership Academy, you've already met Coach Swisher, if you didn't know him before. But I think Renee Fonzough might be here. Ms. Fonzough is the principal. And Deborah Martin, Assistant Coach. And thank you for the support of your team and all you do for the school. Ms. Fonzough's been principal for a while now. We appreciate all you do. All right.
All right, we will start, I don't know if he's here or not, Ethan Lawrence, he out, yeah, he's out sick. So the next one will be Max Marion. Bennett Martin. His brother Walt, who is not here, he is at a basketball game. Costen Dinos, Aloneness. See, guys, I really do know your name. It's not just how you. Isaiah Setser. And Kayden Swisher.
So Kayden is Curtis' son. You can see the resemblance.
Sure, the better looking is.
But I, I wanted to say congratulations to y'all and to the runners from Bishop. I'm actually the mom of someone who in high school ran cross-country, and Curtis was his coach, so I know how exhausting the workouts are, and I know how exciting all the meets are, and to compete in the state meet, if you're not one of the, the parents or one of the athletes here, you may not be aware, but it's, it's teams from literally all over the state. The, it's like an alphabet of the interstate signs when they're calling out the winners. So to have two teams from Kernersville is just absolutely fantastic, and, you know, one of the fastest runners in the entire state as well. So we congratulate all of you on your achievement, and let's give these gentlemen a big round of applause. All right, this time we'll start handshaking with Catherine, and it'll be one time around. And again, Principal Fonzough, Coach Swisher, and Coach Martin, thank you for your support of these fine athletes. I have really great news. You all are part of the ceremonial part of the agenda, and unless you really are interested in hearing the other business of the town, no one will take any offense at all if you, if you scoot out here at this moment. Thank you all. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to the public session. Nope, we're going to do public hearings first. When an agenda item is denoted as a public hearing, persons attending shall be permitted to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those speaking in favor speaking first, and those against speaking second. Proponents and opponents shall each be given 20 minutes at a time. In the event that either proponents or opponents have not designated speaker, speakers to represent that view, the mayor shall divide the 20 minutes by the number of speakers wishing to address the Board of Aldermen, and each such speaker shall be allowed that given time within which to express his or her comments, ideas, and concerns. All right, our first public hearing is rezoning. Jeff Hunter, agent for owner, for property located at 110 Cedar Knoll Drive, being all of the pins as indicated on the agenda on the screen. Petitioner requesting a general use district rezoning from general business special to general business, zoning dock at K 770 A1, and consideration of an ordinance rezoning said property. We'll begin with a presentation by our Community Development Director, Ms. Garner.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor. Our only rezoning tonight to close out the year is K 770 point A1 at Cedar Knoll Drive. Petitioner is Jeff Hunter, who's agent for the owners, being Hunter Commercial Properties LLC. The petition's request is to remove that special, that old special use permit, that was, or special use district overlay that was originally adopted with the rezoning. The site is 1.69 acres and is located on Highway 66. The petitioner has requested to remove the special use zoning overlay and the adopted site plan. The existing business is looking to expand, and he's got some other plans in the works, and the minor modification process would prevent him from being able to do that with the existing special zoning that's on the site. So the general business district is intended to accommodate a wide range of retail service and office uses located along thoroughfares and areas which have developed with minimal front setbacks. Most of the surrounding properties are also zoned, a form of commercial development to the north. We have general business special to the east is pedestrian business conditional that's across NC 66. And then there is some Forsyth County residential to the south. And then to the immediate west is residential multifamily special, that's the existing apartments there. So the site and this block of 66 is predominantly developed already. The land use plan identifies this area as an activity center, which is intended to accommodate compatible mixed uses in a walkable setting with higher density development. This chart was in your staff report identifying the uses that are allowed in general business. Being that he's removing, requesting to remove the conditional or the special overlay, all of the general business uses would be permitted. The site is also located within two overlay districts, the neighborhood scale commercial overlay and the highway corridor overlay district. So any use that's proposed must be allowed both by the zoning district, as well as must also not be prohibited by either overlay district. So there are still a lot of controls on the development of this site. The request meets all requirements set forth in the UDO and the land use requirements set forth in the land use plan. Changing the zoning district from general business special to general business removes the adopted site plan for the parcel, which would allow the site to be developed by right as a general business parcel, subject to the unified development ordinance. Any changes to the site will be reviewed for any applicable requirements of the UDO, which could include additional stormwater treatment that may be necessary, as well as those overlay district requirements. This was heard at Planning Board in November, and Planning Board and staff both recommend the Aldermen to amend the zoning ordinance of the town by rezoning the property in this case, from general business special to general business. Finding the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is. Finding the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is both reasonable and in the public interest because the request to rezone to the general business zoning district is consistent with the land use plan. All members who were present at the November Planning Board meeting voted in favor of approval. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Do any of the Aldermen have any questions at this time for Ms. Garner? Okay, all right, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the rezoning? I'll recognize Mr. Hunter. You could reintroduce yourself and state your address.
I'm Jeff Hunter with Hunter Commercial Properties, 154 Croydon Drive here at Kernersville. I can just answer any questions that you may have, basically all that I've got from Chicago, covered everything very well and just had the special use. Now we're adding on Farm Bureau's, putting on six agents, customer service representative. That's requiring us to have to add the ability to clear of the building that got across the line of the phase one, phase two and required us to.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else here in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Madam, may I motion to approve as recommended by staff?
Got a motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Sabanas, all in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you. It's a good problem to bring back to the town, Jeff. Looking forward to the expansion of your business. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the public session and we have speakers from the floor. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board on a matter that's not otherwise included on the agenda? Did I miss something, Ed? Okay. All right, seeing none? Seeing no one interested in being a speaker from the floor this evening? Oh, but my agenda's not moving. Here it is. Now it's moving. All right. The next item is item B, and it is consideration of a resolution setting the public hearing for a voluntary contiguous annexation of property located at 4353 and 4365 High Point Road, containing 41.632 acres more or less. I understand the weather has changed this somewhat, so I will refer this to Ms. Garner for an update.
Thank you, Mayor. We were expecting to hear the rezoning request at Planning Board last night, but due to the potential for inclement weather, Planning Board was canceled. So we would request that this hearing be scheduled for the January 28, 2026 meeting, and then we will hear the annexation and request for rezoning that same night. So their case will be pushed to the January Planning Board, but hearing their item at the end of January will keep them on track for a Planning Board review for the addition that is being proposed. This is for the North Carolina Leadership Academy.
Okay, and so I think properly we would continue this then to the January 28 meeting. Do I have a motion to continue?
Is that moved?
Got a motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Apple, all in favor. It's unanimous.
Well, may I have missed something? Are they continuing or just having the public hearing on the 28th?
I think this was the meeting when they would set the public hearing for early January when we were expecting to hear the rezoning. So I think if we haven't advertised yet, I don't believe Keith.
But we're not continuing this item, correct?
That's my understanding. This, that was a motion to set the public hearing for the end of January, correct?
Oh, I thought it was a motion to continue this.
No, you, this is just to make, you would make a motion to set the public hearing for January 28?
January 28th.
Yeah, instead of the first meeting in January, the last meeting.
That's fine. I just thought she wanted the, Ms. Garner, I thought you wanted us to consider the date.
No, I'm sorry. So we would be setting the hearing tonight for January, the early January meeting so that Keith could advertise it, and so we just need it advertised to be heard at the end of January so that Planning Board has a chance to catch up.
The resolution as it's presented has the public hearing date January 6th. So this motion was to set the public hearing as January 28 rather than January 6th.
Could you suggest?
There's a motion for the resolution with the amended public hearing date. That's my understanding.
All right, so.
So the motion just needs to be made. I mean, because it was basically.
If you could go ahead and suggest the proper motion then.
Yeah, it was basically continuance, but the motion needs to be made tonight to change the public hearing date for the contiguous annexation of property located at 4353 and 4365 High Point Road, to change it from January 6 to January 28.
I have a motion.
Was that Chris's motion to start with?
No.
Okay.
His motion was to continue this item to January 28, not the public hearing.
So the motion is to set the public hearing, which we can do even though the Planning Board hasn't done what they did. Okay. Do you have everything about it? Who made it? Who seconded it?
And I have Bill as the motion on that.
But Chris already seconded it.
Okay, so it's Bill with the motion, Chris with the second?
Yes.
I didn't get the second, I only got Bill. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, item C, Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, you have in your packet the resolution authorizing an exception to the competitive bidding, and this is for a software platform called Force Metrics. This is used in the PD. We currently use software called P2P. They're going, P2P is going to be not necessarily discontinued, but the information they provide is not, kind of not enough at this point. And I think three other agencies around us that we interact with on a daily basis are also going to Force Metrics, so we're kind of forced, it's ironic, Force Metrics, kind of forced, to go to that if we want to continue to interact with those agencies to get this data that is, that we can draw on. So really Force Metrics is one that provides that and it interacts with the software that we currently have. We will still use P2P, but just use it in a different, different way. So we're asking the Board to authorize that competitive bidding for the sole, the exception to competitive bidding so that it'll be a sole purchase.
Okay, do I have a motion?
They're moved.
I have a motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Apple, all in favor. All right, item D, Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, it's my understanding that this is an item with Salem Foundation. I think the town of Lewisville and maybe some others have contributed $5,000 to the Winston Salem Foundation. That will be used, it's the Winston Salem Foundation's Education Foundation Classroom Supplies Fund. And so the Louisville Town Council contributed $5,000 to this fund, and I think Mayor Horn is trying to get some other towns and cities in South Forsyth County to contribute as well toward that fund. I don't, I've talked to our finance director and to town attorney. I don't know that you all can directly contribute to the Winston Salem Foundation because the way it's, the way it's contributed is not necessarily, doesn't meet the criteria as a public purpose. And I think if you want to contribute $5,000, you can do that, but I think you would probably have to directly contribute that to the school system, not directly to the Winston Salem Foundation's fund. I would recommend if you do that, and it doesn't matter me the way, if you do it or don't do it, we would come up with a contract, I think similar to what we've done with other nonprofits, and then send them that funding with the contract with the stipulations of how it was spent. My understanding is that if it goes to the Winston Salem Foundation, it goes into that foundation and you don't really have the control over how it's spent, even though it says it's going to that, you don't know that. And there's some things in the Constitution and also in the state laws guiding how we, how you all and how we as a town contribute money. So it's just a little bit convoluted with a public purpose, though we know that's what it's going to be. There are some things there that may prevent that. If you'd like to contribute it, like to look more into it, we can. If you'd like to contribute it to the school system, we can certainly make that happen, have those, have that contract next month for you all to vote and approve, to give it to the school system, either way.
I'd like to see some research done on that because if we're going to give money to the school system, I would prefer that the money goes to Kernersville Schools. It's going to be money that's going to help teachers pay upfront costs the beginning of the school year, which I'm very familiar with. My wife is a teacher, and how much money we spend on school supplies every year, that we know it's going to the teachers and it's going to be used where it's supposed to be used.
And I think there's also, there's also another nonprofit set up other than Winston Salem Foundation, the school system, there's a nonprofit set up as well that we might be able to contribute to and stipulate that the money go to Kernersville Schools or whatever. And I think you can do that, and then you're probably within the guidelines of what the state requires as far as public purpose and donation of money.
I wonder if we ought to look into contributing it towards the teacher education grant program that the Kernersville Chamber administers, and that's already set at certain schools.
I think that's probably, and I had not thought about that, but that's probably the best way to do it. I think you could probably give it to the Chamber for their education grants and stipulate, hey, this is what we want it to be used for. I mean, Chris can probably address that better than I can, for sure.
Chris, could you come forward? I was wondering if there's a way, I think the PRS patrol's pretty early in the year, but is there a way to get with the deadlines that you already have for the applications and stuff to get in the hands of teachers while, as Alderman Thompson's saying, they're making their initial classroom setups and plans?
Yes, and we are hearing that the start in January would be helpful to refill those supplies. So the closets are empty and we do have requests that were not filled from our grants. So if you guys would like me to put $5,000 together of grant requests and see if that's what you like, or you can read the rest of them and choose. Our committee did that for the 21, 22,000 that we gave out last week. I'm willing to do anything you'd like. We'd love, we'd love to work with you on that.
So you're thinking the need is immediate for the second semester of school?
That's what we're hearing. We had requests for paper that were not fulfilled. We also had some EC opportunities that were not fulfilled. We had, we had a fair share that weren't fulfilled.
What do you think, Chris?
I think if. That's fine with me. I'm just going to make sure it stays down.
Yeah, I think that's honestly, for us as a town, I think that's probably the best way to do that because then we can, we can donate it, we can give it directly to the Chamber and earmark it kind of for what it's for.
It sounds like that's something we could decide tonight too, right? Because there's already something set up for the town funding the Chamber.
I would recommend, I mean, I can get with Chris this week or tomorrow and get that information, bring it back to you.
Sure.
I mean, we can move it through. If you decide in January, then we can get it to him pretty soon.
Okay, so like, maybe talk about it at our January 6 meeting?
That would be my recommendation, yeah.
Okay, that would be good because that would be a set out plan.
Thank you for your consideration. This is very exciting.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Sound good to everybody? That'll be their, the lunch, that's the summer fundraiser that they have. So they already, so there's a, maybe you'd probably explain it better than me. She needs her own microphone just to keep with her.
We love this program. 100% of everything that comes to the Chamber goes right back to the teachers. So how we pay for any advertising or anything is from our golf tournament. So please know that 100% of your dollars are going back. We start the second Wednesday in July, then August, then September with participating member restaurants. They give up to 10% of what on that Wednesday night or during the day what was purchased. And then we also have private donors, public donors, and we have shops that give for shopping for education. That's how we raise that 20, almost $22,000. Is that the question?
Do you have as much as $5,000 of unfulfilled requests?
At least.
In the hopper right now?
Yes, and the great thing about it, Curtis and I, I can present to Curtis the reading results. So our readers read each of the grants and we have three readers on each grant. So there's nothing that's weighted too far either way because we have three readers on each grant. They are anonymous, so those, the readers have no idea what school and they have no idea what teacher it is. So we feel as though it's been as fair as it can possibly be. So I have everything in a spreadsheet. It says anyone that has been ranked, so they rank them one, two, and three. They also give a total of 50 points or less for each grant. So I can, I've got everything laid out, ready to go. I really appreciate this. I'm excited.
Thank you, Chris.
If I can answer any other questions, please don't hesitate.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris?
No. And that, Madam Mayor, seems to me that that's consistent with our support of the Chamber and the type of services we get for the town, you know, by the donation we make or contribute to the Chamber's budget each year too. So I like that a whole lot better, I think, personally.
Okay. All right, moving on then to the town manager's report.
Madam Mayor, I have two items, both of which I think the memo appears in your packet. The first one is a request for an over hire in the police department. This is a first in the last eight years because we are now fully staffed in the police department as far as patrol officers go. And again, that's the first time in eight years. So what we're asking is, is we have two officers that will retire in July. We have two officers now that went through training and we would like to hire those two gentlemen, go ahead, or those two officers, are both of them gentlemen or one? Okay, I wasn't sure if one was a female, male, or what, but, so go ahead and hire those, get them through the field training portion, and then once the two officers retire in July, go ahead and move them into those two positions. It's not been an issue in the past because we've always had vacancies. We could bring them in, but now with, with everything filled up, we're asking the Board to approve those two positions. We won't, we won't over hire full time by two positions. Once those two retire, they'll move in and then these two positions will basically kind of go away. But we're asking for that. We don't think it'll be a huge cost to the budget because we've had some vacancies up until this point that, that should cover it, but if it doesn't, we'll come in into a small budget amendment for that. So that is the one. For the police department, the other one for the Parks and Recreation Department is, as you two know and the mayor, and I've talked to Alderman Sabanas this morning, when the Parks and Recreation Building was built, we staffed it with just the folks that we knew at the time that we were going to need, which was basically the folks working the front desk, some part-time athletic coordinators, things like that. And the Board was told, hey, we'll come back to you as we move along to fill some positions along the way. This position is one of those that we talked about, basically it's called an event logistics specialist, that may change. We're not sure exactly what the title will be. I was talking with HR about it today. This person will be the one that, that basically all of the logistics that go behind an event, you know, the table, getting the tables in, getting the chairs in, and the people in the right place, coordinating officers, coordinating the porta-johns, fields, all of that. This person will do that. Currently it gets done, but it's kind of a variation of folks that are in charge of that. I mean, I do it some with cross-country. Ernie does it some with some events. Adam Carpenter does it some. Nicole did it some when she was there with different events. So we're going to get one person. So we're gonna get one person um that can kind of work with with those folks that actually do that because we have the staff, you know, to get everything in and out. Someone just has to coordinate all of that with them. Also, they'll coordinate, you know, as we, the beach volleyball, sand volleyball, rather, there, we'll have those courts up and running this summer, have more play on the fields. So everybody has to kind of make sure everybody's in the right place as well. That's what we're asking for on that. Tonight is approval to hire that as a part-time position, a nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine-hour position from now until June thirtieth. We'll probably fill it in about April um because right now, January, February, there's not a big need in filling it. We'll probably fill it in April, but it'd be nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine hours. And then in July, our expectations would be we roll that into the budget as a full-time position. So that's what those two uh positions are for. Be glad to answer any questions. Um, and again, on, even on the one for Parks and Rec, we think we can cover the cost of that probably in the current budget without needing a budget amendment um through some savings and some other places because it is only nine, it's only a thousand hours. If you hire it in April, they work April, May, and June. You're not looking at a whole lot of hours um because they won't work, probably won't work every day. In April and May, maybe in June they might. April, May, they wouldn't. Be glad to answer any questions the Board might have.
Okay, any questions on either the Police Department over hire question or the Event Logistics Specialist? We'll vote on them separately.
Excuse me, it strikes me that, you know, we've been very fortunate that uh both Ivy Redmond Sports Center or Event Center and the Recreation Center, both have, have contributed to profitability for the town. Uh, it's actually making money because of the events, a lot of the events that are successfully booked. And if we don't have someone to sort of keep their finger on the switch, you know, we've got a lot more responsibilities now for, for the uh Recreation, Parks and Recreation Department uh doing other things such as RJ Senior Botanical Gardens that we, we now are booking events for. Now that the town owns that, so it seems to me that this is just a logical following to the growth and to the revenue that that uh facility, center, contributes to the town. I think we've got to continue to maintain the reputation of it so that we can have these statewide events that are attractive. Therefore, would make a motion to approve that.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the hiring of a Event Logistics Specialist as presented by Alderman Apple. Second by Alderman Sabanas, all in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, now let's um back up and talk about the Police Department request. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, three A.
Motion by uh Alderman Thompson. Second by Alderman Apple, all in favor? It's unanimous.
I don't have anything else, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Mr. Powell?
I don't have a report tonight, but we do have a brief uh closed session necessity.
Okay, then that brings us to matters to be presented by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Alderman Thompson?
I don't have anything, thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Apple? Alderman Sabanas?
I just want to say that the Christmas parade was very nice. I really enjoyed that and if you guys were there, you saw my five-year-old having a blast. Um, that's all.
Thank you. All right, uh, is there a motion to enter into a closed session?
Sure. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen uh point one-one A three, I move that the Board go into closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the client, attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant of one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one A five to establish or instruct the public, public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract, the acquisition of real property by purchase.
Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Apple, all in favor? All right, we are now in closed session. Thank you for joining us. Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Is there any further business before the board this evening? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Not a motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Apple. All in favor? Everyone have a Merry Christmas, and this meeting is now adjourned.